Hi, I'm Duane Cave and I'm your host for the next hour as we discuss issues important to the voters in Laguna Niguel with five candidates who are vying to serve on the city council. Thank you for joining us. The South Orange County Economic Coalition and Cox Communications have teamed up to host a series of forums featuring local candidates for the ballot on the November 4th general election. We believe an informed electorate is a vital component of our democratic process. It's an honor to bring those forums to you. Today, we're pleased to welcome our candidates. They are John Mark Jennings, Elaine Genoway, Matt Clements, Randall Morton, and Fred Miniger. Jesse James was invited but was unable to attend. Laguna Niguel voters will select three candidates on the November 4th ballot to serve on the council for the next four years. Here's the format for today's forum. Each candidate will be allotted up to two minutes to make an opening statement. I would then pose a series of questions to each candidate and they'll have one minute to respond. At the end of these questions, each candidate will have one minute to provide a summary closing statement. Our first opening statement will be delivered by John Mark Jennings.
Hi, Duane. Thank you very much and thank you to Cox Communications for allowing us to be here. I think these forums are incredible. I am John Mark Jennings. I'm a candidate for Laguna Niguel City Council and very honored to be here. You know Laguna Niguel is one of the best places anywhere to live, to work, and to play, and this is just a fantastic opportunity to get to talk about our great town. You see, I think that the cause of Laguna Niguel is the cause of every great city in this country. We are and must remain focused on having a strong but limited government. I believe that government is at its best when it's doing excellence in government work and that excellence can be brought forth in city government. I think the viewers know from their own thing, but the first thing that has to be on each candidate's mind is taking care of the financial posture of the city. That we are and must remain focused on limiting the amount of expenditures and doing the right thing for city government. You know Laguna Niguel has one of the lowest tax bases anywhere, no Melrose, we have smooth streets and lots of great parks, and we have to take care to make sure that we're doing the right financial thing for our city. I also believe that government is at its best when it is promoting excellence in government. Laguna Niguel gets this right. In Laguna Niguel, we have one of the smallest footprints of government, but one of the highest levels of excellence in community service. And I believe that the people that are fortunate enough to hold these jobs as public servants must treat them as the higher callings that they are, that they hold in violent a trust that is for the benefit of all the city. And these things are incredibly important. And I believe that the other thing, and probably the most important thing, is energizing the volunteer base in Laguna Niguel. Laguna Niguel wouldn't operate without its fantastic volunteers, and we have to and must maintain ownership in those volunteers so that the city thrives and continues in its great success. You know Laguna Niguel is one of those special places. It's one of those places that I'm honored to live in, my family's been there for a long time, and as a professional, as an attorney, I believe that the commitments that we make and the contracts we sign define this city, and that's going to be extremely important as we go through. My name's John Mark Jennings and I'm a candidate for Laguna Niguel City Council. Thank you.
Next, we have Elaine Genoway.
Thank you very much for hosting this forum. It's important that the voters get to meet those who are asking for their vote. I'm Elaine Genoway, candidate for Laguna Niguel City Council. Thirty years ago, we purchased our home in Laguna Niguel, and over those thirty years, I have been very active in our community, helping to shape what it is and what that definition of, that shared vision of Laguna Niguel. For the past thirty years, I have served the residents on a number of our city commissions and committees, as well as in leadership roles in our service organizations. Currently, I am Commissioner of Parks and Recreation and very proud to say a longtime member of the Laguna Niguel Military Support Committee. I've also been honored as a Laguna Niguel Citizen of the Year for the things that I have done to make Laguna Niguel a better place for all of us to live and work. The things that I value for our city are low taxes, no debt, keeping Laguna Niguel safe, a small, responsive, and efficient government, and investing in our city so that the Laguna Niguel residents can enjoy the benefits of that. Professionally, I'm a financial advisor, so I'm skilled in budgeting, financial planning, and long-term comprehensive planning. My goals are very simply stated: make Laguna Niguel the best city to raise a family, to grow a business, and to enjoy the city that we all enjoy. I am very excited about the redevelopment at Crown Valley Park, but know that we need to watch the budget not to incur debt. I'm very excited about many things that we have coming up in our city, but want to make sure that we have fiscal transparency and financial responsibility. We are on the eve of our 25th anniversary of cityhood. It's been an excellent twenty years with the leadership we've had. I believe that the next twenty-five years will be even better and look forward to your support and ask for your vote. I'm Elaine Genoway, candidate for Laguna Niguel City Council. Thank you.
Our next opening statement will be from Matt Clements.
Hi, my name's Matt Clements. I'm running for city council in Laguna Niguel. We are home to sixty-four thousand residents, over twenty-four thousand homes. We have eighty miles of scenic trails, thirty-four parks, and over forty-seven percent of our community is designated for open space. I'm deeply rooted in our community, born and raised. I attended all of our local public schools. I have a lifetime of roots in our community. As a member of the Emerging Professionals in Laguna Niguel, and also as the founder of the Orange County Young Professionals Network, I fully understand the vitality of the next generation of Americans to step up and to take charge of its government. I will not allow age to become an issue of this campaign. I will not expose, for political purposes, my opponent's lack of youth or experience. Rather, I believe it's our turn to step up, to take responsibility in government, and to fully immerse ourselves in civic responsibility. We must begin now. Every decision that I make is going to be between two things. It's going to be between financial prosperity and also for quality of life. It's our turn to continue the stewardship that's going to ensure your businesses, your economic future, your families', and your safeties. That's why I stand before you today. I'm stepping up for the youth who need to be a part of our government moving forward. Thank you so much for voting on November 4th. Your appreciation of voting is vital to our growth. Thank you so much. My name is Matt Clements.
Next, we have Randall Morton.
Thank you very much. I'm Randall Aaron Morton. I'm a candidate for Laguna Niguel City Council. Anyways, I don't think anybody could go wrong voting for all of us, actually. We have a great roster of people that are really dedicated and are eligible, you know, to serve you. Anyways, my desire is to see more affordable housing in the city of Laguna Niguel, especially for the veterans, and also to have more opportunities for business growth here, you know, instead of the big box stores. Also, I seek to have what's called the Law Enforcement Accountability Act. We should have one. We'd be the only city out of the thirty-three cities to have one. Anyways, I hope to get your vote. Remember, I'm the one without the suit and tie. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
The final opening statement will be from Fred Miniger.
Thank you, Duane. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fred Miniger, AKA Fred with Experience. I'm the best candidate for the position because I have served the city of Laguna Niguel for eight years as chairman and commissioner of the Planning Commission, and for ten years as chairman and commissioner of the Traffic and Transportation Commission. I'm a lifelong conservative resident of the city of Laguna Niguel for over twenty-one years. I'm a business executive and engineer with over thirty-one years of a successful engineering firm in Orange County. I have advised over eighty-five cities in California alone with regard to land use and transportation issues, and as an engineer, I always come up with solutions rather than magnifying the problems. I know with my business experience and public service in our city and my personal commitment to this community, I'm ready to serve the city of Laguna Niguel as the next council member. I'm the only candidate with a collection of education, experience, and commitment to the city of Laguna Niguel to serve as the next council member. I'm a very proud graduate of Harvard University, John F. Kennedy School of Government Executive Education Program with regard to the leadership decision-making. I'm the only candidate who's running for the city council that I'm ready to run on the first day on the job. I have been endorsed by over sixty-seven federal, state, county, and city officials, and I'm very honored to be endorsed by Congressman Dana Rourabacher, our Assemblywoman Diane Harkey, our Senator Mimi Walters, and our founding mayor and Orange County Supervisor Pat Bates. I would be honored to have your vote. I thank you very much.
Thank you all. We'll now begin the question portion of the forum. Each candidate will have one minute in turn to respond to the question posed. Our first question involves the balance between quality of life and economic development. Maintaining public services is keeping citizens safe, requiring city revenues growth. To grow revenues without new taxes or fees requires economic development. Many billowed cities like Laguna Niguel struggle in this area. If you are elected, how would you go about growing city revenues to maintain vital services in the city? I'll start with Elaine Genoway.
Thank you, Duane. I have reached out to the business leaders in Laguna Niguel to define what is a business-friendly community. That's one of the things that is a major goal of mine, is that we grow our businesses in Laguna Niguel, because how do you increase the revenue base to a city without raising taxes? It's growing the businesses and growing that sales tax revenue. Growing the businesses also involves more employment for the residents of our city. What I look forward to is I support the development of a arts venue at our Civic Center Plaza. There could be some mixed use there. We need to look into establishing a daytime population in Laguna Niguel, having mixed use where we do have people coming in to work into offices and provide services, so that those daytime consumers are supporting our businesses as well as the residents. But economic growth is vital to our city, and that is something that I am very excited about pursuing and working on with our city staff.
Now, we'll move on to Matt Clements.
Great question, Duane. I'm a community. I'm a businessman. I know how to budget. The two most important pieces that were spoken were quality of life and financial stability. You know, to address our growing impact of people, we have four developments currently happening right now in the Gateway. We have a tower that's one hundred and forty-two apartments, we have two hundred and forty-eight additional apartments, three hundred and fifty-one apartments, and mixed-use retail, as well as four hundred and fifty-one new dwellings. That's going to be well over eleven hundred total dwellings that should address what we need, which is more housing. Now, we are built out, so I'm going to agree with the Town Center Revitalization Project. This is going to do a few things for our city. Number one, it's going to help businesses want to come back to Laguna Niguel, and when we keep our money in our city with our tax revenues, it's going to help our budget and it's going to help everybody. I'm definitely in favor of a Town Center Revitalization Project.
Next, we'll have Randall Morton.
In order to have growth, you have to encourage growth. And the only way you can encourage growth is simply by curtailing the red tape that is required of business. And I always believed in the laissez-faire. It always worked well until Roosevelt came into power with the New Deal, which hasn't really worked. We still technically are under the New Deal. Anyways, what I would prefer is the growth of the Town Center project and the growth of the Gateway project, combining housing with businesses. Thank you very much, both of me, on November the 4th. Thank you.
Next up is Fred Miniger.
The key to success to any community in California would be public-private partnership. During the past eight years that I served as chairman and commissioner of the Planning Commission, every project that came to the city, we wanted to make sure that, number one, we look at the public interest, i.e. what would be the best for the residents of our great city of Laguna Niguel. As a businessman, as an executive, as an engineer, as I mentioned earlier, I've served eighty-five cities in California with regard to their land use and transportation issues. So I clearly understand the potential adverse negative impact of any of those projects that would not be suitable for our community. In short, during the past eight years, as a member of the Planning Commission, I was very involved with the decision-making on the Gateway, which is the biggest project that we have in our city. So I'll make sure that every aspect of the projects are being implemented successfully for the well-being and safety of the residents of Laguna Niguel.
The question we're asking our candidates is about growing city revenues.
Hi, I'm John Mark Jennings. You know, Laguna Niguel is one of the most successful business cities around. We do it right in Laguna Niguel when it comes to taking care of our businesses, and we're very thriving in the amount of money that we have in the bank right now, over seventy million dollars. And that's not an accident. That's the result of many people over a long period of time doing the right thing and being fiscally conservative. But having said that, we owe it to ourselves to build a new and vibrant community, and that's why the Gateway project and the City Hall project for Town Center is so critical. Wouldn't it be awesome to have a place that people can go in Laguna Niguel, down at the Gateway, a true destination spot for the people to go? I know I get tired of driving past our monument signs, our city limit signs, to go someplace else for dinner, to have a good evening, that type of thing. And I think it's important to bring that back. We must maintain a strong, very conservative position on business and not raise taxes ever. And when it comes to City Hall, we've got thirty-two acres of land to do something truly spectacular and build a really fantastic destination, which all our city can be proud of, and I'd appreciate your vote to support those causes. Thank you.
The Gateway project is a great example of mixed-use development that has incorporated jobs and housing growth. Are there other areas in town that would avail itself to this type of development? This time, we'll pose that question to Randall Morton.
Yes, I feel that Town Center Drive could be revitalized than it is now. It seems like a pretty dead area for much of the day and much of the night. It would really be nice if we could accommodate, you know, and encourage other business uses of that particular area, more restaurants per se, more individual businesses. That, I believe, is where it's available right now. Hopefully, for me, on November the 4th. Thank you very much.
And now, Matt Clements.
You know, Orange County's growth in the last twenty years has been significant, especially here in Laguna Niguel. It's also been equally incredible. We do have an opportunity to work with the county of Orange. We also have the opportunity to work with our fifth district, to possibly take a piece of land and create new jobs. What we would propose would be a new boutique hotel. We can also make an art center, a place for kids to gather. A revitalization of the entire Town Center is absolutely necessary. Right now, our Town Center is about twenty-five to thirty years old and it's single level. I would love to attract businesses that have moved over to Lake Forest, that have moved to Mission Viejo, that have moved to Laguna Hills, to come back to Laguna Niguel. What that's going to do is keep our tax dollars in our city and help us grow. That will help us get new jobs and help the entire community.
We're talking about mixed-use development. Besides the Gateway project, are there other areas in town that would avail itself to this type of development? Fred Miniger.
As the former chairman of the Planning Commission and eight-year commissioner of the city, well, basically, we have reached to a point that is called build-out scenario for the city. So therefore, with the exception of the Gateway that we can revitalize, rejuvenate, new projects, there are no other places in the city that we can do so. Of course, the Town Center, i.e. the areas in the vicinity of the City Hall and the library would be a very good location for that, that I call it the downtown Laguna Niguel, but we are envisioning, we are working in collaboration and cooperation with the county of Orange to put an art center, a type of facility that would be serving our communities in the best fashion. So I don't see, I don't envision any other areas that we are going to be providing that kind of mixed-use facilities. The only potential area would be the federal building area, but that would be contingent upon the U.S. government's agreement with the land use changes there.
We're talking about mixed-use development. Besides the Gateway project, are there other areas in town that would avail itself to this type of development? Let's pose this question to John Mark Jennings.
You know, maybe it's because I'm from a small town, but I believe in towns having a downtown. I think it's important to have a place for people to come to. That's why the Town Center is so important to the city. That area of land is right there in the middle of our city, right in the heart of the town, and we have to use that to create destination spots, like a museum, like a hotel, like an inn, like restaurants, like walkways and parks for our children to play in. Those are very important. As a planning commissioner, I'm very honored to have the job of being able to provide guidance on exactly what goes into that. And we have to work with the county to make sure that that is a very prosperous space for the city, and not just for that area, but that it could spread out and we could do something more in the entire region down there on the Town Center plan. I'm also very strongly in support of revitalizing all of the malls and things that are around town so that we have a new and fresh community. And we've seen that on the Planning Commission over the past years, where people are really investing back in the town, and I think that's very critical. All of that will add to our Gateway project.
And Elaine Genoway.
I fully support the development of the Civic Center Plaza. That will entail an arts venue, could have a hotel there, and mixed-use shops and office. It's very important that we proceed with this and do whatever we can as a city, because this will bring vitality to our community. It would bring a small hotel. We don't have that type of venue in our city, and many organizations and groups would love to come to Laguna Niguel if we had more meeting space. That is something that we are short on. But having that mixed use would be better for the economy, it would create more jobs, create more business, and create something that would make Laguna Niguel a destination. And when we have tournaments in town, we'd like to have a place where people can stay in town and go to our restaurants, go to our shops. I'd also, I have reached out to the business owners to see what businesses would be complementary to what they have, because we do have some open stores in the different shopping centers, and we would like to create synergy between the businesses that will be coming in and the ones that are there.
Thank you. And now, time for our next question. An issue of contention earlier this year revolved around a $925,000 low-interest home loan included in the new Laguna Niguel City Manager Rod Foster's employment agreement. The purpose of this was to entice Mr. Foster to relocate from Upland. It was reported that Mr. Foster had a similar loan, albeit smaller, in his previous position in Upland. In your opinion, is this an appropriate taxpayer-funded benefit for the city employees? And where would you draw the line in terms of who gets these types of benefits and who doesn't? Our first question will go to Randall Morton.
You know, I always did believe in transparency. Obviously, this isn't a transparent thing at all. There should really be an investigation launched here. I always did believe in transparency, and I'm really upset as a taxpayer when the sheriff's deputies ask for more money and everything's enclosed doors. We need transparency in everything, including this one, and it should really be investigated for wrongdoing. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Fred Miniger.
Well, Mr. Duane Cave, with all due respect for the record, I wanted to make a correction. Mr. Rod Foster, our current city manager, only lived in the city of Upland, but he was the former city manager of the city of Colton in San Bernardino County. So as a matter of the record, when he moved from the city of Colton to the city of Laguna Niguel in Orange County, in my professional opinion, I think we should have, we meaning that the city council should have had a public meeting or open session to talk about the potential ramification of giving out any extra loans to Mr. Rod Foster, even though I do advocate to hire, to recruit the best, the most qualified city managers in the state of California, but at the same time, I wanted to make sure that we, as a conservative city, we, as a fiscally conservative city, we always keep the money to the city so that all the taxpayers know about the potential ramification of those. So, open session would be the one that I would be advocating for.
We're asking about low-interest loans to city employees, and where would you draw the line in determining who gets this type of loan? John Mark Jennings.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say I think Rod Foster's an excellent city manager. We're lucky to have him here, and we were lucky to get him from another fantastic job that he left. You know, I believe in transparency in government. If the government has open and honest sessions in city council, that's what's important. When the citizens get an opportunity to participate in that process, that's what's important. I don't think it's all that uncommon for somebody as the CEO of the city to have an incentive-based program, but it has to be open, it has to be honest, and it has to be subject to public scrutiny. As long as the city council made those decisions based upon that, then I have no problem with that. I don't believe that loans to city employees, generally speaking, are the way to go for a city, but anytime you do that, it certainly has to be open to the scrutiny of the public, and transparency in government is everything in that regard. I believe that lower taxes is critical. We have to keep the tax dollars in the pockets of the people that put those dollars there to begin with, and anything that we can do to foster that is the right way to go.
Next, Elaine Genoway.
Well, one of my core values is fiscal transparency, and if there's any issue that you think may cause some concern among the residents, I would think that we would go out of our way to make sure they're aware of what is being done and how it's being conducted. As far as a loan to the city manager or any other employee, I think the best use of city funds would be for the city residents. Any loans would need to be done at the prevailing market rate, and as we know, loans have been very low in the last couple of years. But I think the transparency is the issue, and that's why there is a question. In the future, going forward, it is not something that I would propose, but it may need to be considered in terms of an overall compensation package when we are looking to recruit certain talent.
And now, Matt Clements.
I agree. Transparency should be absolutely number one. Even if it takes a council session that takes an extra fifteen minutes, it's absolutely worth it. You know, Rod has also brought Eileen Gomez with him, who's an excellent city clerk. I agree that low-interest loans are very prevalent today. You know, it really depends on what that interest rate was. I'm in the real estate business, so I understand that rates today are hovering around four percent. Now, it depends if that was higher or lower, but either way, it should have been discussed publicly. Now, having Rod come to the city is a major benefit for Laguna Niguel. Keep in mind, forty percent of our income comes from property taxes from homeowners, and that's a big benefit. But we do want the public to be aware of that. We do want the public to know it upfront, and we definitely want their input every single time. Although no one should be singled out, it should be fully transparent.
Throughout Orange County and up and down the state, there have been growing con-... Throughout Orange County and up and down the state, there have been growing concerns about unfunded pension liabilities and benefits for city employees. How, in your opinion, has Laguna Niguel managed its obligations to current and future retired civil servants while protecting taxpayers from this costly ramifications associated with these retirement benefits? And what do you believe needs to be done moving forward? Let's start with Fred Miniger.
Well, in my opinion, I think in order to come up with the best plan, we have to be fair and equitable. Employees are entitled to the best market value that they can get for their positions with regard to compensation. So when I look at the County of Orange, when I look at the way the Orange County Board of Supervisors acted during the past two years or so, they've done a superb job. In my opinion, firefighters, Orange County Sheriff's deputies, as well as all the city employees ought to be compensated with the proper package. However, at the same time, we want to make sure that we are not going to be mortgaging the future of my kids and everybody else's kids by non-paid or unfunded pension programs. So job number one for any city council member would be to be fiscally conservative so that we manage the city budget in the best fashion.
Our question involves unfunded pension liabilities. What do you believe needs to be done moving forward? We'll pose this question to John Mark Jennings.
You know, no one's more important than our firefighters, our police, and our civil servants in Laguna Niguel. We owe them a dedication above all else. Having said that, you know, these contracts that we enter into with the fire authority, with the city, with the police services and our city employees are very important contracts. The vast majority of the city's budget is focused right on those expenses. We have to have experience on city council for people who are accustomed to negotiating and being involved in those contracts. And that's why, as an attorney, I bring that experience and over 20 years' worth of doing exactly that to the city government. Having said that, you know, Laguna Niguel is a contract city. We contract for these services. And so when we look to the unfunded portion of their pensions, we look at the city and say, that's part of the county's responsibility. And Laguna Niguel has done its part. It's paid its fair share. And what it needs to do is make sure that it's taking care of its police services and its firefighters and doing the right thing by them every time, and asking the county, how is it you're going to do that so that they are not strapped with our children's debt for years and years to come? I think we have to improve that.
And now Elaine Genaway.
As a financial advisor, I am also a chartered retirement planning counselor, and I specialize in pre- and post-retirement issues with my clients. And when I look at this issue that we have with the unfunded pension, realize there has been a shift in our country as how retirement is addressed. Many years ago, company employees had pensions, and then there was a shift into the 401K where the employee then became responsible for it. There needs to be some readdressing of how we are taking care of our firefighters, our, and our sheriffs, and our city employees. They are very dedicated people, and what their pensions, we're part of their compensation package. But we do need to look at that, because what we are going to have happen is our children are going to be carrying that debt. And it is something that I know at one of the council meetings, a councilman had asked for an accounting of what exactly is our unfunded liability. And that is something that we need to find out exactly what it is so that we can address it.
Thank you. Next will be Matt Clements.
Do I feel that the unfunded pension has been done responsibly? Not at all. Unfunded pension liability is a very big deal. You know, we're going to bear this liability later on, and it's up to our city council to practice fiscal stewardship moving forward. You know, we are in a contract with the County of Orange, and although not everyone retires at the same time, everyone will retire, and it's up to us to be responsible to address that upfront and not delay any further.
Next, Randall Morton.
Whatever happened to the 14th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, equal protections under the law? The pensions, the unfunded pensions are not equal protections under the law at all, not even remotely. Take your 401K that you're required to pay for. Maximum you can get right now as of this, you know, is maybe $1,500 a month compared to, to the six figures a year for a deputy sheriff and our firemen. I think our firemen do a great job. Now, the thing is, we have, we have other liability from the mistakes made by our Orange County Sheriff's deputies, you know? Although we have very good ones compared to other cities. But still, the city is responsible for the conduct of our, of our police department. Thank you very much.
For our next question, what is your personal five-year vision for the city of Laguna Niguel? And if elected, what would be your first step to make this vision a reality? We'll pose this question to John Mark Jennings.
You know, we're so lucky to live in Laguna Niguel. It's a fantastic place where the streets are smooth and the parks are excellent, the businesses are thriving, and we've got money in the bank. It's really hard to mess with that, with that success formula. You know, but the, the truth is, is that more has to be done. You know, one of the most difficult things to do in any economy is to keep it growing strong. We must be fiscally conservative. That's one of the biggest things. And I think that when you're trying to fly straight and level, there's a lot of things trying to pull you off course. And we have to have strong leadership in city council to make sure that stays strong over the next five years. You know, in the next five years, we'll have the opportunity to build out the Gateway Project, to do the renovations in the new town center complex, but we must be certain that we're watching out for the citizens of the community as well. Traffic is a real concern for the citizens, and I've talked to many of them around town, and they're very concerned that traffic is mitigated at both the Gateway and around the major intersections in town, and we have to look out for that. I promise you that as your city councilperson, I will meet that commitment and make sure that we take care of the concerns that are important to you as we go forward with both the Gateway and the town center projects.
Elaine Genaway.
Over the next five years, I look forward to the redevelopment at Crown Valley Park. That park has aged. That is a hub of activity in our community, and we will have gone through the addition of the splash pad and by that time, the new building at Crown Valley Park. That's a, that's an investment in an asset to benefit the residents of Laguna Niguel. I also look forward to incorporating the Gateway into Laguna Niguel and the residents there participating in the Laguna Niguel lifestyle. When we look at the Gateway, we see it's for a different demographic and different transportation needs. But my commitment to Laguna Niguel is that whatever is developed down there, any further development, does not negatively impact the traffic patterns on Crown Valley Parkway. I also look forward to working with our businesses to develop those shopping patterns very early so the residents in the Gateway come into Laguna Niguel to go shopping. I also look forward to the grand opening of our arts venue in our Civic Center Plaza. That will be a great addition to Laguna Niguel, and I look forward to the implementation of a young citizens team in our community. Thank you.
Next up, Matt Clements.
You know, this could be one of our biggest issues moving forward, is the influx of population. So we have safety, we have traffic, that's going to have to be addressed. My biggest concern right now is AB 109. This is Jerry Brown's early release of serious criminals. These are spilling over from our state penitentiaries into our county jails and filling them up quickly. In fact, they're way, way overfull. What this has done is this is putting violent criminals back onto our streets. And now that we're built out and having all of our new plans with shopping coming in, I'm concerned about our safety moving forward. I want to make certain that we have a full staff of police, ensuring not only for our children, but for any violent criminals that are allowed to walk our streets of Laguna Niguel as we grow. Keep in mind, we're built out now. It's been about 25 years. The next 25 years is going to be of the biggest concern, so it's not just five, it's 25 for us.
We're talking about your five-year vision. And what would be your first step to make this a reality? Next question will go to Randall Morton.
Well, first off, we really have to know what our obligations are to our fire depart, our pension plans, to our fire department personnel and our sheriff's deputies. We don't know that yet. So we don't really know if we, you know, our obligations, right now, we, right, right as of today, we definitely have $70 million in savings, but we don't know if we'll have that in five years at all. Personally, you know, I'd like to get down to the bottom of our obligations. And not only get down to the bottom of our obligations, to create new venues, you know, for our city. I agree that maybe the, the Art Museum might be a good venue, but it doesn't produce as much tax as it will. Probably be a tax-free venue with no tax, tax money coming in. All right, thank you very much.
And Fred Miniger.
As your next city council member, I wanted to make sure that we implement all the plans that we created over the past eight years or so for the Gateway-specific plan. I was one of the guys that was heavily involved with that. I did computer programming as an engineer, as a transportation engineer, to make sure that the potential adverse negative impact of traffic would be properly mitigated. We wanted to make sure that we add additional lanes on Crown Valley Parkway. We wanted to make sure that we add additional lanes on Cabot. Therefore, to, to make sure that the city would adhere to the Gateway-specific plan would be job number one. Job number two would be to synchronize all the traffic signals within other major arterials within, within the city that have not been synchronized yet, so that people would have the best mobility in the city. And last but not least, to make sure that our pension programs for the city employees are properly reviewed and the city would be safe for the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much for your responses. We'll now move to the closing statements of one minute each. We'll start with Elaine Genaway.
Thank you for listening to us today. City government is directly correlated to quality of life. Our city is, has $660 million in assets, a $41 million annual budget, and 68 employees. Your vote is very important. Those that are supporting me are supporting me because they know the values that I stand for. They know that I have the longest record of service in Laguna Niguel, that I've demonstrated leadership, and that I'm a fiscal conservative. Those that are supporting me are the Orange County Republican Party, the California Women's Leadership Association PAC, Congressman Dana Rohrbacher, Senator Mimi Walters, Supervisor Pat Bates, former Supervisor Tom Wilson, Mayor Lindholm, Mayor Protem McCluskey, members of every city commission and committee, council members from our surrounding cities, and hundreds of Laguna Niguel residents. I ask you to join them so that we can make the next 25 years even better than our first 25 years. Elaine Genaway, and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
And next up, Matt Clements.
You know, we should be proud of our local and regional governments managing our, our tax dollars very efficiently in the past decade. But now it's our time. It's time for us to step up, to take responsibility, to take leadership in our government. It's really important that Laguna Niguel serves its vitality for 100 years. It's my hometown, it's where I grew up. I love our city. It's important that we continue this stewardship for our families, our community, for our safety, and for our economic well-being. Thank you so much for being a part of this forum. Please participate on November 4th. And remember, only you can make a difference. And it's important for all of our young citizens to engage in government, to step up. This is your time. And if I want to leave you with anything today, I want you to know that I'm stepping up for you. Thank you so much.
Next up is Randall Morton.
I'm determined to, to provide the entire transparency. I don't believe that, that the city should, should have closed sessions and provide a beautiful package, you know, for, you know, for our city manager, even though he's a good one. And secondly, we, we certainly need more affordable housing. We really do. We need a law enforcement accountability act to be passed, and I want to do that. I want to stand up for my city. Well, for Randall Morton, on November 4th, the one that, that doesn't wear a suit and tie. Thank you.
Fred Miniger.
I'm Fred Miniger, aka Fred with Experience. I'm a dedicated public servant to the city of Laguna Niguel in responsible positions in the last 18 years. I'm the only candidate with the right education, experience, and commitment to be your next city council member. As I indicated earlier, I have the highest and the most number of endorsements from federal, state, county, and city officials, 67 of them. I'm the only one that seven past mayors of the city of Laguna Niguel are standing behind me for my race. I'm running to make a positive impact on the families and businesses and residents of Laguna Niguel, not just for a resume boost. I would be honored to have your vote on November the 4th. I'm Fred Miniger, Fred with Experience. Thank you very much.
We're now hearing closing statements from each of our candidates. Our next candidate is John Mark Jennings.
Well, thank you again to Cox Communications and for the community forum. This is a fantastic opportunity to talk to everybody. Again, I'm John Mark Jennings, and I want to be your city councilperson. Laguna Niguel truly is an amazing place to live, to work, and to raise a family. I know that, I've done that. As a city planning commissioner, I've been involved in the critical decisions that have made this city so great, and I look forward to continuing that on, on city council. What a great place to be. We must maintain fiscal responsibility. We must treat government as if excellence is the watchword for what goes on there. And we must engage our community volunteers to do the things that government does so well, which is creating ownership in our town going forward. I'm so excited by all the many projects coming up. I'm so honored to have the endorsement of all five of the current city council members, and I'm the only candidate here who has that. I'm also endorsed by the California Republican Party, the California Republican Assembly, the Women's Leadership Association, and many, many others, including hundreds and hundreds of other Laguna Niguel residents. I want to be your city councilperson, and I'm very committed to doing this job right. I ask for your vote. My name is John Mark Jennings. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, this has been a lot of fun, but we're out of time. We'd like to thank John Mark Jennings, Elaine Genaway, Matt Clements, Randall Morton, Fred Miniger, for taking time out of campaigns to join us today. This and all the forums are available throughout the month on Cox Channel 3. You can also view them via Cox On Demand in the free zone and on Cox's YouTube channel. We encourage you to learn more about the South Orange County Economic Coalition and its ongoing efforts to promote jobs, growth, and economic vitality throughout the South Orange County region by visiting our website at economiccoalition.com. On behalf of the South Orange County Coalition and Cox Communication, I'm Duane Cave. Thank you for taking time for it with us today, and be sure to vote on November 4th.